And everyone should be in now.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you. Good evening. I am calling this public hearing to order at 6:00 PM in accordance with the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, MGLC 131, Section 40, and the Boston Wetlands Ordinance, Boston City Code Ordinance, is Chapter 7-1.4. The Boston Conservation Commission will hold a virtual public hearing this evening on March 19th, 2025, to review the following projects to determine what conditions, if any, the commission will impose in order to protect the interests of the public and private water supply, groundwater, prevention of pollution, flood control, prevention of storm damage, protection of fisheries and land containing shellfish, and protection of wildlife habitat. This evening's hearings will be followed by our regular meeting, and in accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, we are conducting this meeting online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the Conservation Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Additionally, the meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself, or send your questions to staff via email at cc@boson.gov. For the record, my name is Michael Parker. I'm Chair of the Commission. Could staff please identify themselves?
Elena Itamarri with the Environment Department.
DeeDee Hernandez with the Environment Department.
Okay, anyone else? No? Okay. I'll call Commissioners who are present. Commissioner Sullivan?
John Sullivan.
Commissioner Laney?
Amy Laney.
Commissioner Conan?
Conan Thirvingeram.
Thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
Alice Richmond.
Commissioner Herbst?
Anne Herbst.
Okay, great. First item on the agenda this evening is Notice of Intent for DEP File Number 0062028, Boston File Number 2025-007 from Goddard Consulting LLC on behalf of the AD Group Company Corporation for the proposed construction of an apartment building with an associated parking lot, utility lines, and stormwater management system in 586 to 598 Canterbury Street in Rosendale. Resource areas are 25-foot riverfront area, 25-foot waterfront area, and 100-foot buffer to bank. This hearing has been continued from the February 19th, 2025 hearing. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Tom Schutz here on behalf of the applicant. Tom Schutz works at Goddard Consulting. And we are here back in front of you tonight, and we have some revised materials and a brief presentation. So if we can just kind of start jumping into that. So again-
That would be good. Before you get going, just let me ask you, did you receive staff's comments?
Yep.
So if you could address those in your presentation, that'd be fantastic. Thank you.
We'll try and address everything as we go. I think our presentation is kind of, it's kind of made to address those questions as we received those earlier this week. So those will be answered as we continue going through the presentation. And if we may miss anything, then we'll be happy to address them at the end.
Okay, thank you.
So again, Tom Schutz, Goddard Consulting, here on behalf of the applicant at 586 and 589 Canterbury Street. This does have a DEP file number, and that is 6202028. And we also are joined with several members of the team. I'll let them introduce themselves here. From Goddard, I also have Chris Fratirelli, who is the invasive species expert from Goddard. And then I'll allow everybody else from the team to introduce themselves now.
Kevin Quade, Civil Engineer, Boston Civil.
Michael Jokum, Verden Landscape Architecture.
Myself, I was a traffic engineer.
Andreas Huang, AD Group.
Perfect. Those are all of our people joining us for our presentation tonight. So if anybody has any questions specifically related to traffic, engineering, or the landscaping plan, they can be directed to them. Anything that involves the invasive species management plan, or the wetlands buffers associated with that, they can be addressed to Goddard. So we can move on to the next slide. Just a quick agenda. We're going to recap all the supplemental material that was submitted between the last hearing and today. We'll show the revised invasive species management plan that was submitted. We'll give a full landscaping overview because that was lacking at the last hearing. So allow Michael to kind of dive into that and show what they've prepared. We'll also get into the plan revisions and changes that Kevin pulled together, and then we'll finish with questions and follow up if there are any. Next slide is... So between the last hearing and now, we submitted several things based on comments and questions from the commission, and then also that was things that needed to be addressed outside of the questions. So first, we revised and submitted an invasive species management plan, which entailed the entirety of the 25-foot waterfront area, and then also both sides of Canterbury Brook in the 25-foot riverfront area. We submitted an updated landscaping plan, civil set, and then also our drainage report and stormwater calculations. And we'll get into all of those as we continue on with the presentation. All right, we can move on. So I'm going to turn it over to Chris now. He's the invasive species expert from Goddard. He'll kind of run you through some of our thinking for our invasive species management plan. We'll look at some photos of the invasive species on site, and then we'll show you the planting scheme that we've also pulled together as a part of this. So I'll turn it over to Chris now. He'll walk you through that.
Thanks, Tom. Hi, folks. Good evening. My name is Chris Fratirelli. I'm also a wetland scientist at Goddard with Tom, but I tend to handle the bulk of our projects that involve invasive species management, ecological restoration, and those types of things. So as has been discussed, as part of this invasive management plan, we have essentially three target species that we're going after here. The first being Norway maple, obviously a tree. We are only talking about attacking the smaller individuals of those Norway maples because the larger canopy-sized Norway maples, while they are technically an invasive species, are kind of on the low end of how invasive a plant species can be, and they do provide important habitat for birds specifically, as well as shading to Canterbury Brook below. Next, we're also going after multiflora rose, which is obviously a rose with some nasty recurve thorns. They have kind of a shrubby growth pattern and end up being long arching canes that can reroot once they hit the ground. So as far as invasive species go, these two are relatively easy to manage. Again, no walk in the park, but relatively easy. The third species we're targeting here is going to be the more difficult of the three, but we think we've put together an appropriate plan to manage that. And that is Japanese knotweed, obviously, one of the more pernicious and pervasive invasive plants, certainly in New England. It's got a very extensive root system. They grow incredibly quickly. They'll easily be over your head by one growing season. And they resprout very easily from really any amount of vegetative material that's allowed to remain in place. And the combination of those handful of things really make it a challenging invasive species to tackle. So as far as management goes, we're proposing manual removal wherever possible. So this involves hand-pulling, mechanical cutting, weed-wrenching, and that is sort of the go-to for any invasive plant in this zone. Unfortunately, invasive species are invasive for a reason, and mechanical removal only really gets you so far. So we're also proposing a component of herbicide application here. So this is primarily addressed at the Japanese knotweed, but is also applicable to the multiflora rose and Norway maple. So we're proposing cut-stump herbicide treatment wherein you essentially, as the name implies, you cut the plant and apply herbicide directly to that cut surface, which is a very targeted and very effective way of getting that herbicide to the plant material. So we are not proposing any foliar spray here that has the potential for off-target impacts or drift that might occur due to wind or air currents. We're only proposing cut-stump treatment as far as herbicide goes. And the herbicide we're proposing to use here is Roundup Custom. It is approved both by the EPA at the federal level, as well as the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources for use directly in the water. And obviously, we're not going to be applying it to the water here, but because of our proximity to Canterbury Brook, we find that that's typically a very appropriate formulation of herbicide to use in situations like this where we are in proximity to open water like that. So that is kind of the overview of the invasive management plan. And if there's any additional questions, follow up, I'm happy to address those.
Thanks, Chris. And I just kind of want to direct the commission to the graphic that you see on the screen here. This is the location of where the majority of each of the invasives can be found on our site. So the brown color is where the majority of our sapling and larger Norway maples can be found. The dark green is the two patches of Japanese knotweed that exist on the site. And then also, the lighter kind of army color green is the small amount of multiflora rose that can be seen. And we'll check out some photos in the next slide to show you those patches. So I think we can move on to the next slide, show some existing conditions photos. So we'll start with the top-left photo. That is the photo showing the small patch of Japanese knotweed that exists on the or on the western bank. And then also, you can see, it's tough to tell in the photo, but you can see some of the Norway maples in the background as well. If you look on the lower-left photo, that's further looking down Canterbury Brook. You can see that there isn't really even any vegetation on the sides of the brook. There's no Japanese knotweed on this side. And then as we go to the other top-right photo, again, looking back towards the large culvert, Scrub-a-Dub would be up on the hill there. Not too many invasives on that side, no Japanese knotweed. And then the one towards the bottom is showing some of the, it's tough to tell again, it's showing some of the multiflora rose that exists, looking back towards the culvert in Scrub-a-Dub. But really, only two small patches of Japanese knotweed, which Chris addressed. So now we can move on to the next slide. This would be our plantings, which would be 60 shrubs. So we know that we have our large Norway maples up there, providing a lot of the shade. So we didn't want to propose any larger trees that could grow up into those. So we just are proposing 60 shrubs. Those are some hazelnuts, lowbush blueberries, service berries, and witch hazels. And those will be spread out equally throughout the 25-foot waterfront area, and also both sides of our riverfront area. So that, I think, wraps up our invasive species management plan. We'll now throw it over to Michael so he can discuss his landscaping plan on site. I think we're good with this slide, too.
So this is the overall landscape plan prepared by Verden Landscape Architecture. In general, our landscape plan is aiming to address a lot of factors, but an emphasis was put on sustainability and stormwater management, both to push Boston's green infrastructure initiatives, but also to protect the wetland within the site. If you start by looking at the left of the page along Canterbury Street, we're proposing six new street trees, impervious unit pavers, which introduces some of that green infrastructure to the streetscape, where the existing condition is just asphalt. At the top of the page, you'll see a row of existing trees which are red maples. It's those small circles up near the top. We've planned to preserve them and have taken steps as a team to ensure their survival, not just to buffer our development from the other development, but also to contribute to the greater Rosendale tree canopy. Within the driveway, you'll see we have some pervious paving unit bands, which we're hoping to add for rainwater infiltration. Coupled with those pervious unit paving bands are planted parking lot islands, which are meant to reduce the heat island effect with trees in them, but also to provide space for snow storage. At the bottom right of our page, next to the driveway, we've included a lawn area with a plant bed and then even more pervious pavers. And we're expecting this to be used for snow storage in order to keep away from the wetland area. At the top right of the page, you'll see the wetland area that we've been talking about. We're proposing a metal picket fence to deter anyone from entering the wetland, but also to provide a safety barrier for the proposed native plantings that Goddard just reviewed. Next slide, please. This slide is our planting plan. The main goal of our plan was to reintroduce native plantings to a site that was just about completely overtaken by invasive plant species and to create a strong ecosystem for the plants and animals. Our plant list at the bottom of the page contains mostly native species as we expect them to adapt better than other non-native plants. Over to the left along Canterbury Street, you can see the six new street trees we're adding, and another 18 new trees within the site. Most of them are deciduous and native trees, which greatly counters the invasive trees that are currently on the site, as mentioned by Tom. Plant selection was determined with function in mind. For example, we went with hardy perennials and grasses in the parking islands, in the bordering driveway. Areas we expect, you know, they may encounter more salt and a little more foot traffic. As for most other plantings on site, we chose plants we thought would thrive given their proposed location. Within that 100-foot buffer zone, we're planting native white oaks, American elms, and switch grasses, which will blend in nicely with Goddard's proposed plantings to create a native-only plant environment, with the exception of those Norway maples. Thank you. I'll pass it back to Kevin.
Thank you, Commission. It's Kevin Quade from Boston Civil. The next slide is just, I think this was presented before, but just that we have an erosion control and sediment plan, erosion and sediment control plan. You know, we obviously want to make sure that the waters and the sediment stays on site during construction. The limits of that were just revised from the previous submission with some of the changes that were made. I'm happy to describe in more detail as we go to the next slide. I believe the next slide is our utility plan. We did just get comments from the Boston Water and Sewer Commission that are mostly MEP or plumbing and sewer-related because they're a little bit behind on that for purposes of just getting, you know, these types of permits. But we are in coordination with them. We did get a comment about our area drain overflow for our system that is collecting the back half of the parking lot. That, you know, as I mentioned before, we did update the design and the layout, which I'll describe in more detail on the next slide. But that is still designed to hold the two-year storm event without any overflow, which the overflow is proposed to go to a domed area drain, which would be surrounded in crushed stone. So would minimize erosion. And I believe as Mr. Sullivan commented at the last meeting, you know, that during those two-year storm events, that brook gets pretty full. So, you know, there is an area drain or a drainage structure on the neighboring property where all that runoff does flow now. So we thought it was a logical approach, even though it is within the 100-foot buffer. It has been since revised to be outside of the 25-foot waterfront area. So we thought that was an improvement. And if you go to the next slide, describe a bit more about the parking lot changes that occurred. So we did take the request to shorten the parking lot. We did keep our spaces at eight and a half feet because of our understanding that's the minimum allowed under zoning. Also, you know, to keep it functional. And what we did with the compact space request, if you zoom in, or I don't know if you can zoom in, but near the trash area, we have a row of seven spaces, one, two, three, four, yeah, seven spaces, that's proposing a width of seven and a half feet. We know that zoning does go down to seven, but we thought, you know, that due to eight feet being compact space requirements in other municipalities, that seven and a half was a bit more functional. You know, so with that, and then the reduction of one of the landscape buffers from seven feet to four feet, we had a net reduction of 10 feet from the riverfront area. And that resulted in about an impervious area reduction of about 440 square feet within that 100-foot buffer. So we do have our transportation engineer to call if you have any questions related to that. But yeah, happy to answer any more questions that might come up. And, you know, we haven't run a cut fill on this yet. I understand that is a comment. And that number is a little unknown at this point until we have a set utility design that's been approved because there is, from soil testing, some fill in the back of the half of the lot, which did have, you know, tires and other types of debris, which we proposed to replace with clean fill. So we think it's an improvement just for the soil types alone, so. And then the next page, I believe, is just our grading plan, which, you know, just kind of gives a better sense of the proposed grading there. Thank you.
Okay, Kevin, quickly, before we lose you here, can we go back to the parking spaces? And you said that zoning requires eight and a half feet width, and then said there are eight spaces for compact cars that you're at 7.5. And then you said something else about, it sounded to me like some leeway in the width of the parking spaces. So I guess my question, and others will be asking about this, is the 8.5 width for regular spaces and 7.5 for compact, is that a, are those the absolute requirements? Or is there flexibility there?
We did some research on the zoning. I know it's in an email somewhere. I believe it was responded to.
I can help out with that, Kevin.
Yeah.
That's actually Rosendale, it's only go Section 76-32, where it says that, you know, you need, the full parking spaces should be eight and a half by 20. The minimum for the compact spaces is 7. But we consulted with our traffic engineer, and he recommended doing seven and a half to keep the spaces more functional, so you can still, you know, easily open the door in the parking, the compact spots. I also wanted to add that, you know, Kevin mentioned the seven spaces that you see there next to the trash area, but there is already, there was already an existing compact space right at the building. So a compact space is a-
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Oh, you're at the end. Oh, okay. So I didn't jump it down there. Okay, fantastic. Okay, I just have a couple of quick questions, then I'll let Elena go through the questions that she sent along to you. For the invasive species management, it looks like you're going to be doing two different types of application for the Japanese knotweed and the multiflora rose. So for the multiflora, you're hacking, I guess, the, I don't know, you're hacking the shaft of the plant and inserting some herbicides, and so what happens then?
Yeah, happy to speak on that. So typically, we like to provide at least a little bit of leeway in terms of kind of discretion of the best way to treat invasive plants, depending on what exact stage of regrowth or time of year we're talking about. So we do have two application protocols outlined in that plan. I think what you were just referring to was what we sometimes call hack-and-s squirt, where basically you just cut an opening in the bark of the plant and apply some herbicide to that cut, exposed inner wood. And then the second would be cut stem, which is similar, very similar in concept, but you would actually remove the upper vegetative portion of the plant and then apply herbicide to that cut, fresh-cut wood on the inside. In all honesty, they're not terribly different in any appreciable way. They just kind of provide a little bit of leeway primarily for the preferences of the contractor.
Okay. I'm sure Commissioner Laney will have something to ask about that, so I'll just leave it there. As far as the snow removal area, can we go back to that slide? I'm just wondering where the area is where you're going to be stockpiling snow. I know you pointed it out, but I didn't catch it in real time there.
So if you are to look at the bottom right of the plan, there's a bit of a patio. There's that little dogleg off the driveway. We have a proposed lawn area over there. It might be better if we go back a few more slides to the landscape plan.
Where are we going? Back to the landscaping plan?
Yeah, the colored landscaping plan.
It's noted on our civil layout plan as well, but this is probably better.
So bottom right of the page, there's that patio, right above the patio, there's a little bit of a plant bed, and then there's lawn right above it, which abouts the driveway. So that area with the big lawn, we're hoping to use for snow storage, as well as we designed the plantings within that plant bed right next to it to be hardy plants that can withstand salt and snow storage.
Okay, okay. So what happens as far as treating the, because the snow is, as you said, it's got salt and other good stuff in it. So that area there, so I guess it's like a natural filtration, you're just going to let it melt right there? Does it need to be contained or diverted somewhere else, or? It's not really near the brook, right?
No, it's away from the-
Far away.
And it's a 10-by-15-foot space, and there will be permeable pavers there. So it has a place to drain, too.
Okay, final question, and then I'll let others talk. The permeable pavers, what's your plan to keep them cleaned?
We did actually update our operations and maintenance plan to include the manufacturer's recommendations. I know that came up at the meeting last time. I'm sorry I didn't mention that. But yeah, we would, of course, have a management plan, or the owner would, following the manufacturer's guidance of how to best maintain those. So we had updated the operation and maintenance plan and include that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, Elena?
Great, thank you. I had a quick question, back to the parking spaces question. Did, I think that I had counted the seven compact spaces in the area of the parking lot that kind of like goes toward the brook, and I wasn't sure if I just misunderstood or not seen the eighth one that you mentioned.
Yeah, the eighth one, you can find that behind the building, under the carport. So on this plan, it's, yeah, where you see that dotted line. I believe it's the one next to that aisle there. You cannot, don't see it that clearly here, but it's, there's a, at the far end, when we kind of see a bump out with the dotted line, or with the roof overhang there, that is another compact parking space.
Okay, it's, there's, I know that there is one page of the plan set that had the parking spaces numbered. I don't know if-
Yeah, that's my sheet C4. It's actually not noted on the plan, but it is space number 11.
Great, okay. So 11 through 18 are all compact. Okay, that's helpful. And then I think the other thing to just clarify, I think, is that generally speaking, I think that for restoration reports or for reports after plantings or invasive management is done, I think three years tends to be the standard. So that was something that I had kept in the draft conditions, if that's something that the commission wants to see. And the other question was about any potential cross-sections or renderings between the parking lot area down to the stream to get like a slightly better sense of what the proposed grade change would actually look like.
So we don't have that cross-sectional analysis, but we're only going to be increasing the grade behind the parking lot about a foot or a foot and a half on average. So we're not bringing in too much fill. Yeah, only about a foot grade change from the edge of the parking lot down to the natural soil. And again, that's going to be all clean fill. It's not going to have any of the nonsense that's currently in there. It's going to be sourced and brought onto site from a clean source.
Okay.
Yeah, just additionally, I have to follow up on that. It does slope on the plan, you know, top to bottom, towards that car wash. And there is actually like a localized mound between our site and the, you know, the river now, or the stream now. So, you know, it's kind of difficult to create a typical section for that, but it's, yeah, like Tom said, it's not too much fill. It's raising a couple of feet on the south side, then, you know, basically meeting grade on the north side.
Okay. That's helpful. Yeah, Chair Parker, I think that you between your questions and what I just clarified, all of my questions were answered.
Okay, and to be clear, you have that three year maintenance plan or monitoring plan. It's in the order conditions already, so we don't need to add it as a special condition.
Correct. Yeah, it's it's in the draft conditions. And then I guess the the other note there is that the CR conditions were kept in, but I think that that's probably something that could be removed, assuming that the commission isn't trying to see a CR on the site.
Right, okay, okay. Yeah, we we had not talked about that at all. So yeah, okay, Commissioner Sullivan.
Yeah, I I had two simple questions. You own the property to the other side of the brook about halfway up and you're going to take care of your invasives. From there to the American Legion Highway sidewalk is owned more likely by the city. How do you keep invasives that are on their property from coming into your property? Are you going to kill all the bad stuff on your property? What do you do about theirs?
Yeah, I'm happy to address that as well. Unfortunately, it's a little bit of a tough, a tough spot for invasive management as a whole. We see it all the time where, hey, we have a property line that we have to respect and the neighbor doesn't let us work on their property. It's kind of a unfortunate but inherent constraint of what we're doing here.
Yeah, did you ask the city whether they would love to have you keep their area nice and clean? And have an agreement with them that you can get in there and take care of their property. So you have a nice on both sides of this little bit of a brook. I it's just curious how you're going to possibly think that's going to work. It just seems that it's going to evasives up top of theirs is just going to come back into yours.
That would actually be the state that we we'd have to have a conversation with because I believe American Legion is is overstate jurisdiction.
Yeah, okay. Well, whoever owns it, it's a an entity of the public and I'm sure they'd love to have you pick up the trash from their property, et cetera, that would actually blow down on yours. Because you're going to be responsible for cleaning up anything in the waterway. And then the other question, the same thing is if another tree falls down in that little thing, how do you get to it? You're going to make all these beautiful plants. How do you think you're going to reach in there and remove something big that might get clogged up that's on your property in your waterway? How would that work?
You would have to crane it out.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, that that would be so, for example, when when we have a tree fall. Sometimes happens during severe weather events, right? Whenever that happens, we bring an arborist. And usually they either have their own smaller crane setup, or if we need a larger crane, we get to get a crane in addition to that. That's how they will remove it and it would have to happen from American Legion Highway.
Right.
And also regarding, I'm sorry, regarding the maintenance of the sidewalk on American Legion Highway. I think on a previous in the previous hearing, someone from the community Ricky would have joined. And actually asked that we included in our maintenance program that we clean up the the sidewalk, whether it's snow or trash. You know, that that section of of the brook, because as that gentleman pointed out, it's it's kind of no man's land. So if we don't take care of it, no one will.
Right. Well, Eleanor, is that in the the order that they in fact have an obligation to at least try to clean it up or you know, it is someone else's property?
We can also include that as as a special condition. It's not there currently.
No, I'm just saying that at least they have to make the attempt. And it's to their advantage. So the stuff doesn't blow into their property and then it's the waterway and then they're violation. Because who knows how that that works just makes and I know we include it in somebody else's further down the street. The other simple question I have is right behind the building, you've got your infiltration bases, which is fine. And then you've got the row of trees. How do you keep those tree roots from because they're very close from getting into the infiltration basis where the water will be a long time? And seeking the water and clogging up your infiltration bases. Are you putting some kind of filter fabric to keep the roots? From invading the open space of the infiltration basin?
Yeah, we could certainly look into root guards, you know, the type of materials I'm not specifically familiar with, but it's more. Well, I'm sure there's some that would meet the tonsile strength requirements made it needed. I'd have to look back at all the emails to see what is typical typical for those type of trees, but we could do that or, you know, we did propose concrete type structures at the front of a lot. You know, just for any cranes or anything like that. So we could we could also look into different type of structures instead of, you know, coltext that you know, with the with the fabrics that could provide a bit more protection if that was a strong concern.
Well, yeah, it is a concern because that's what tree roots want to seek the water. I mean, everybody that owns a sewer lateral doesn't work anymore, finds the tree roots in it. Because they're they're going to want to head there. So you're going to find a way to protect it and you you're going to be hit with the water with sewer requiring that for you anyway. So you can look at it under this condition or the water sewer won't sign till they you have it. So I'm just bringing that up to your attention because it's very close, your trees and your shrubs, just so you're aware of it.
Yeah, so we did switch to the retain it type structures. We had been proposing shade previously. But the eight by eight footprints give a little bit more flexibility and in terms of how many numbers you can do. So we yeah, we can certainly look into that for the system at the back of the building, no problem.
Yeah, I just that's just for future maintenance. It doesn't take many years before you get jammed. So yeah, that's that's all I had.
Okay, so just to be clear, Eleanor, as far as the order of conditions, I think we talked about having some cultech or some protective measures to protect the, I guess, the infiltration basins from the tree roots. And also that we'd be asking the proponent to consult with either DCR or the city or whoever whoever owns the property adjacent regarding invasive species management.
Sounds good. Yes, um, excuse me, I've noted those and we'll make it to draft language for it. The other the other condition that we had recommended in the staff comments was also saying that at least seventy five percent of the surface area of the ISMP zone should be reestablished with indigenous plant species within two years, which is this was specifically mentioned in the applicant's materials, but if we want to include that as a condition, just so it's explicit in the order as well, that could be good.
Sure, that's a great idea. Thank you. Commissioner Linay.
Yeah, I had a few questions on the invasive species management plan. If we could go back to that slide. Or I could just pass them.
There we go.
Thank you. So first on the treatment, I think of the knotweed in particular. I'm curious about the timing because I know there's fairly specific guidance on when that should occur. And I wondered, I didn't unless I missed it, I didn't see that in the plan document. So that's one question. And then I think understanding the goal. Believe the goal is stated as eradication for the knotweed. So is this area knowing that that can often take multiple years, will you be revisiting this area and treating that again? And then looking two slides forward at the plant at the plan for planting that area. I think my concern, and I know in the plan, it says the basic manage management plan, it says that the layout of these these shrubs will be done in the field. So this is sort of a suggestive suggested layout, but I have some questions about the appropriateness of this, just because it seems to sort of disregard the varying conditions here, the slope and the moisture level. And then on the slope portion closest to the stream, I just wondered if there was something that could do more to control erosion. Either a fabric and or the plant selection there rather than these fairly tall shrubs. So I was curious a little bit to know more about your plant selection here and why it was sort of being uniformly distributed across this area.
So I I'm happy to address the first couple of topics there. Typically, when we're treating knotweed, we want to do it sort of late summer, early fall, as the plants are starting to send carbohydrates down to their root system. It really helps them kind of incorporate that herbicide and and transport it throughout their root system. So if that was not included explicitly in the plan, that would certainly be our guidance as supervisor on this site. And I think also probably the the route that any licensed herbicide applicator would take anyway.
And would that involve cutting? Well, in advance of that treatment.
Typically, we like to do it at the same time because having that sort of fresh cut surface is really critical to allow it to incorporate that herbicide into its tissue. And if you would remind me the second part of your question there.
Let's see, so. Well, I think looking at this planting plan, and then if you're continuing to have to treat that knotweed on the slope. You know, are these shrubs going to be planted there? Or is there something that could make more sense to help prevent erosion?
Right. So as far as ongoing treatment, we do have I think our plan had outlined it as two years and it sounds like we're going to be bumping that up to three years of monitoring with a with a condition here. So at at bare minimum, you know, we're bound to it for three years and we're hopeful that with kind of the the relatively limited scope of the extent of knotweed here, that we'll be able to get it at least very well under control in that timeframe. I don't think there would be any major objections to continuing to manage it beyond that period, but I think as far as the work regulated by an order of conditions, that would kind of be what we're held to. As far as plantings, I know Tom and his team drew up the planting plan kind of separate from me, so I would probably defer to him on that. I think, you know, if there were concerns or suggestions about swapping out some of those plant species, that would that would be a very easy thing for us to do.
Yeah, again, thanks, Chris, for answering the first part of the question. So again, this graphic was just kind of laid out and then it'll be planted in the field accordingly. But we'll probably put more of the service berry towards the 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 stream itself because they tend to like wet feet more, but in general, the stream is a pretty steep grade. So the majority of the plants are were selected to be upland plants. So that's why that's what our I guess witch hazel, lowish blueberry and hazelnut were selected for because the majority of the plants that were there currently had a facultative status of fac up or or greater. So that's those that's why those were selected, but we could also potentially do maybe a seed erosion control blanket with native seed to help control that slope a little bit better. Or even just a wildlife conservation seed mix that can be scattered along the bank to maybe have some more herbaceous plants to help prevent erosion and I guess any additional stormwater entering the the brook itself. I guess either either one of those are refined for a special condition if if that if that deemed fit.
Okay. And then I have just one question on the general plan. So I know that row of existing red maples along like plan north, they're quite small currently, but I still wondered, it looks like the new paving is quite close to their center point. So I just wondered if there were any measures there being taken to help sort of minimize any any damage to existing roots. Or if you have any sense of of, you know, sort of what that critical root zone is on those trees.
Michael, can you mind taking that one?
Yes, so I'd say the critical root zone on those trees. There they vary from about three to five and a half inches. So I'd assume the critical root zone would be about five foot radius from the tree. Originally, we had our driveway closer to the those trees and the neighbors. We decided as a team was better to move them away. The fact that they're young trees gives us more of an opportunity to potentially save them. And so that is what we're hoping for.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Before we move on, I just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself or send your questions to staff via email at CC at yeah, at CC at boston.gov. As far as the special condition that came out of that discussion there, Eleanor, you do you have that down? I actually looked at something on the map, the plan here, and I lost everything that Tom had said.
So the special conditions that I have listed so far are regarding the I I think just to make the the permeable pavers maintenance explicit, the special condition to reach out to DCR or the city about the adjacent property will figure out who the appropriate party is. Protective measures to protect the infiltration basins from tree roots and then that special condition about seventy five percent of the surface area being reestablished.
Commissioner Linay, did that? That address your concern that Tom addressed? And again, I apologize. I didn't hear the whole thing.
Sorry, Eleanor, I think I missed. Was there a erosion control?
No worries. Yeah, sorry. So I for erosion controls, we have our sort of standard set of of conditions for that. But let me.
Through the chair, if I may.
Sure.
I think we were just suggesting maybe we would add a condition that would also stipulate that some sort of native herbaceous seed mix go down in this area because I don't believe that that's explicit. And I think that that would aid in reestablishing this with native vegetation and providing some additional stability on the banks there.
Okay.
Yeah, that's appreciated.
Great, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Connan.
Thank you, Chair Parker. You know, these invasives can be such a pain and I really appreciate Commissioner Sullivan's point there about invasives that are existing in adjacent properties and can jump over. You're putting a lot of thought into managing the invasives here, but if the other properties are left unattended, then this could be futile. Especially as the new species are taking some time to take hold. Japanese knotweed, as you know, spreads through rhizome and these other could spread through seeds and air. So in general, paying attention to all the adjacent properties, looking at what you can do and reaching out to them. Whether it's educating them or just asking if they would allow you to go in there and do any management that you're able and willing to do would be much appreciated. Between the hand pulling and cutting and applying herbicide, what do you know what the what the proportion is? How much of it is going to be herbicide and how much is going to be hand pulling?
It's a little difficult to put a number to that. We we definitely aim to use those mechanical removal methods wherever we can. But unfortunately, they're really only mostly effective on really the smaller individuals that have a root system you can actually get out of the ground. So I I would hazard a guess somewhere maybe in the neighborhood of forty percent mechanical, sixty percent herbicide, something along those lines.
Yeah, it'd be good to. I mean, that's your guess now, which I appreciate. And as you actually do the work, it'd be good to document that and see what that turns out to be.
Yeah, absolutely. I think with our with our monitoring as we go forward over the next couple of growing seasons, that's certainly something that we'll detail in those reports.
Great, I'm happy to hear that. Just I tried to look at the pictures of the the stream. It looks like there is some erosion there. Is that correct? I just I could be mistaken in the way I'm looking at the pictures. Is there any erosion ongoing right now, like soil settling into the water?
So in my opinion, there isn't any current erosion. Maybe if there's a high storm event, it might wash away some of the soil on there, but it doesn't appear to be slouching into the Canterbury brook any more than it already has. It's the soils are pretty stable in the location on the banks. So it doesn't seem like there's any insane erosion, but I mean, it is a a soil bank, so you can expect some during a high stormwater event. But I I do think the special condition of the seed mix on the edge will help with that. And also the addition of additional plantings is going to help mitigate some of that erosion and loss of soil.
Yeah, I appreciate the special condition. I'm just wondering if, you know, how loose the soil is currently. But you're saying it doesn't appear.
Pretty hard packed.
That's good to hear. And the trees along it's Canterbury Street, right? Are they all the same species?
No, they're not. If we could go to the planting plan, I could tell you what species they are. tell you what species they are. Well, so I can tell you, we have um, celtus occidentalis hackberries, lactupellows, and American elms. And so there's three different species, um, each of them repeated twice. And that's just that there's some biodiversity, there's tree trees that work well, but also in case there's some sort of disease that wants to take out a certain species of trees, we're not losing all six tree trees, we're just losing one or two.
So they're interleaved?
Correct.
Great, thank you. And that's all, Chair Parker.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
Uh, yeah, I I have a couple of questions about the snow spot. Um, is is this, I'm a little confused. Is the snow removal spot, as we look at the drawing that's in front of us right now? It's, is that on the lower right?
Yes, so that is if you look at the bottom part of the building and just over to the right where the edge of the driveway kind of meets there. Um, it's right in that zone there.
Okay, so so if I understand this, um, the area that's sort of light gray is is your parking area, correct?
Correct.
And then is there a row of bushes or trees or something between the parking area and the area where we're going to do the snow removal?
There is not. There would just be, sorry.
I'm sorry, what what is the green that I'm looking at there?
That green is lawn area.
So it's just lawn and and then you you have that, how big is the area where you're going to put the snow?
I don't have the exact figure, but it's about.
Ten by fifteen, ten feet by fifteen.
Uh, you know, I don't know enough about this, and I'm the first one to acknowledge that. But that does not seem like a big enough space to clear the area that you would have to clear, let alone the issue of what's, you know, in the snow or the the salt or, you know, anything else that's there. I mean, how did you determine that that spot was going to be big enough to 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 clear the whole area of parking, which is I I'm taking it to be at least all of the light gray? And um, you know, I don't know, where are you going to put the snow from the front of the building?
So I can say the spot that we came up with was um, we didn't run any hard numbers, but it's based on our experience of laying out sites and looking at um, how much snow is actually built up during snow periods. And so that's how we got the size of those sites, those areas.
Okay, and and you're assuming, I mean, I, again, you know, it's a little difficult to predict snow. Um, and you know, based on our experience the last few years, there's been a lot less of it, maybe not this year, but a lot less of it than there has been. Um, but it it you're saying that you use some measure from from where did you use that measure? And how much salt and where does it go?
I'm sorry, I said we didn't use a specific measure. Um, we'd rather just use um, how we typically would lay out a site and looking at. Um, nothing from a science, but just from experience.
Uh huh, and you can't use the section in the upper left-hand corner because that's the access to the parking, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the only, really, the only place you can put snow is either in this little corner on the right or down um, towards the stream, which would probably be a less good idea anyway, right?
Yes, these measures, this area being a little bit larger in size towards the patio was to avoid putting any snow by the stream.
Okay, and let's assume that um, the snow melts from the area where you're putting it. Um, and I I guess there's at least some bush there that I I think I see on this drawing. Um, where does where does it go when it melts from there? I mean, I, it's hard to tell from your drawing. It's obviously not on your property, but where is it going?
Um, so I can I can help answer that, the did it melt question. Um, so there is a catch basin in that area, which is going to our, you know, subsurface infiltration system, which actually does have an overflow through the building. So it would have two chambers to really go through, two sets of systems to go through before it ever, you know, overflowed. Um, and that would only really overflow at very high storms.
And this is a question that Commissioner Sullivan generally asks, and he knows, he understands much better than I do again. How how deep are these basins that it's going to go into?
Um, it is about two feet below natural, the the system at, which which system are you talking about? The.
Where where you said the water is going to go.
Yeah, yeah, so that system is um, about two feet below natural existing grade. Um, but the bottom of the stone of the system is about six, six feet, seven feet below um, proposed grade.
And and do you have any idea about what, you know, that size that you've just described is in relation to a ten-year storm, a fifty-year storm, a hundred-year storm? I mean, is that going to cover how many of the different kinds of storms that we now describe?
Yeah, we we modeled it off about, that was fourteen rainfall events. Um, you know, we did run the two, the ten, the twenty-five, and the hundred. Um, and you know, we're we're meeting the one in storage filing requirement um, over the site. And um, you know, so it would it would be those large and high-intensity storm events where we'd even see any overflow.
And and where does the overflow go when you, i- if you have?
That, um, so basically, there's a catch basin um, pretty close to the trash area um, that it's about two spaces down, sends all the water to one system that's located at the back of the building um, behind those row of parking spaces. Um, sounds like we'll be switching that chamber type, but obviously keeping the similar volume to uh, a concrete-type structure. But that would then overflow through the building, which does not have a basement in this portion. Um, where the overflow is, it's um, I'd say it's just a couple of spaces up from the um, you know, the bottom row of that parking there, which would then go to another system um, that, you know, it's been designed to basically handle that overflow without fully backing up. And then it it overflows to a fifteen-inch drain main in the street.
It, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said. It it overflows into what?
It overflows into a fifteen-inch, fifteen-inch drain main.
Yeah.
The street.
On this, on on this. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate your questions, I mean, your answers.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Herbst?
I'd just to follow up on Commissioner Richmond, I wonder if a sign signage just at the other end of the parking lot indicating no no storage of snow at that end would be uh, might make some sense. Um, I think that could get tempting uh, at different times, especially if you have a lot of snow. Um, it, I I have a quick question for Eleanor. I think you had gotten some indication from the city that eight feet was kind of the standard. But I but I just wanted to make sure you're satisfied that eight point five is at at least in this location is is what's.
Yeah, actually, it's funny, um, as we've been having this conversation, I'm try, I've been trying to find um, more details on that. That was the email that we had received when we had reached out. And that's um, the same person who shared the the ratio of um, compact spaces that also shared that. But um, yeah, they they mentioned that eight feet is the standard width of of parking spaces. So I'm not, I'm not sure if um, I'm not sure where to fact-check that other than with the person who shared that with me. Um, but I am wondering if anybody on the proponents team had heard from the city that eight and a half was necessary.
We have a transportation expert here.
Yeah, Faisal can can comment on that. And also um, it's uh, if you want to check the zoning code, it's Article sixty-seven dash uh, thirty-two. That mentions the eight and a half by twenty.
Uh. And I I actually have the section of the zoning code up as a PDF. Pulled up just to show it's, we're not making this up.
Yeah, no, I'm looking, I'm I'm looking at it. It's, that's accurate.
Okay, uh, then I don't have any more questions about that. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Eleanor, anybody from the public?
I don't see any raised hands, and we didn't receive any emails either.
Okay, so let's quickly go over the um, uh, special conditions that we've added through this um, very enlightening uh, discussion for the last hour. Um, I have, let me start with what I have, and then you can fill it in. Um, in all fashion, it, and I'd entertain a motion to issue the order of conditions with the following special conditions and close the hearing. The special conditions are a no dumping of snow sign. Um, in the parking lot, uh, do we have a location, Commissioner Herbst, Commissioner Richmond?
I think that's the east end.
East end.
Southeastern end, yeah.
Okay, no dumping of snow in the southeastern end of the uh, parking lot. Um, I have the um, uh, tree root protection for the infiltration basins. Um, seed mix, still can't quite remember how to um, phrase that. And I think, Tom, you were the one who um, suggested it, or maybe it was you're not all on the screen anymore.
Yeah, it was, it was a proposed seed mix on the steeper banks of Canterbury Brook to help facilitate um, help facilitate stability and prevent erosion.
Okay, thank you.
And Chair Parker?
Yes, please.
Correct you on the tree root protection, uh, I think tree root barrier for the um, storage system would be more appropriate.
Okay, thank you. So tree root barrier, okay. Okay, um, you already have the uh, previous paver specs are going to be um, going to be included, consult with DCR and/or the city regarding the adjacent property and invasive um, species management. And uh, that's, that's what I have. Did I miss anything, Eleanor?
I believe that we were still missing the um, the condition about the seventy-five percent of the surface area being reestablished. Everything else is there.
Okay, so let's that, add that in, seventy-five percent of the surface area being reestablished, is it within a certain amount of years or?
It's uh, so uh, I believe it was seventy-five percent of the surface area within two years of the ISMP uh, implementation.
Within two years of the ISMP implementation, okay.
Do we know that it is the DCR? Or do we want to be more generic, whoever owns the property?
I'm sorry.
Do we know that it's the DCR?
No, I uh, said city and/or DCR.
Well, I think it's Mastard more than DCR. DCR doesn't seem to own much anymore, so I'd put Mastard or city.
All appropriate uh, agencies.
The highway agency, yeah, they don't, wherever they may be.
Yeah, Faisal, you had something?
Yeah, American Legion Highway is a city parkway, so it's owned and operated by the city of Boston, so.
Yeah, that's that's my opinion also, but.
Okay, let's go with all appropriate agencies and departments. And quasi-departments thereof, okay.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Taken.
Okay, um, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Linay?
Aye.
Commissioner Connan?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries six, nothing. Okay.
Commissioner Scrivener, should we also close the hearing?
Uh, yes, I thought that was in the motion.
You did, you did say that.
Yeah, did you?
Thank you.
I'll, I promise to stay awake then.
Thank you, thank you for the nickname too. I'm beginning to enjoy that. So uh, thank you to the development team. Uh, this is a very sensitive spot. Uh, I think you've been very thorough. Uh, fellow commissioners have been very thorough, as has been staff. So uh, I myself, I'm pretty happy as to how this turned out, a big improvement for the property, so thank you. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda, notice of intent for unassigned DEP file number from Collins Engineers, Inc. on behalf of the Massachusetts Port Authority for the proposed repairs to the existing concrete deck beams, pier walls, and fascia beams on the Boston Line parcel at One Black Falcon Avenue in South Boston, resource areas, land subject to coastal storm flowage, coastal bank, and one hundred-foot buffer to coastal bank. Who's here on behalf of the uh, proponent?
Mira Lindo, um, good evening, commissioners. Um, I'm with the environmental unit at Massport. Joining me this evening is Chet Myers, Assistant Director of Maritime at Massport, as well as Danielle Goodrow with Collins Engineers. Um, and with that, I'll hand it over to Danielle, who will present the details on the project.
Thank you. Do we have Danielle?
Who was muted?
Commissioner, I'm I'm happy to take over if um.
You're the understudy?
Okay, exactly, absolutely. Uh, I'm sure Danielle will get uh, her uh, her computer working soon, but in the meantime, um, I'd just like to introduce this project. Uh, this is a project uh, doing work rehabilitating an existing pile-supported deck uh, that has been in place uh, since the original construction of the cruise port uh, back in nineteen eighteen. Um, uh, it's, 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 the address is listed as One Black Falcon Avenue, but it's actually located uh, really way at the end of Black Falcon Avenue, actually pretty far away from the cruise port. Um, oh, Danielle, are you?
Yes, I don't know if you could tell from my video, but I froze there for quite a bit, so thank you for covering me for a second.
Absolutely, go ahead, go ahead.
Appreciate it. Um, so as Chet was saying, the the project is located west of the cruise port. It's a small parcel right next to Summer Street Bridge, um, and that's leased by Boston Line. Um, it's very similar to how the cruise port is oriented, though. Um, the primary scope of the project is repairs to existing infrastructure below the deck. Um, again, nearly identical to what's ongoing over at the cruise port right now. That construction project's been going on for about a year now. Um, and these repairs include uh, undermined concrete pier walls, deteriorated beams, deteriorated decks. Um, and this work is to restore the capacity of structural members and keep the site operational. Um, if you go to the next page, I have some maps just to orient you. Thank you. I'm working off of one one screen, so bear with me. Um, we've included the aerial USGS infima map here, again, just to orient you to the site. You can see the reserve channel there, it's in the center of the map, and the Summer Street Bridge all the way to the left where that project site is located. Uh, if you don't mind going to the next sheet, please. Um, so do you want to note that we reviewed sea level rise and resiliency above is just an excerpt from the coastal resilience solution for South Boston? Um, but because the scope of the project is limited to structural repairs to deteriorated infrastructure to preserve the design life, um, resiliency improvements were not considered. But this project doesn't prohibit or preclude resiliency enhancements considered in the future. Um, Massport does have resiliency and sustainability guidelines and floodproofing guidelines that they use on all of their projects. Um, and if you could go to the next slide, please. So a few photos here, again, just another aerial zoomed in, you can see the proximity to the Summer Street Bridge on the left. Um, the property to the right is a BPDA-owned property, it serves as a parking lot um, for the ferry. And on the photo to the right, you can see it's a topside look of the pier looking east. Um, so that's really just along the waterfront looking east. Um, there's currently some jersey barriers there, and that's just to um, prevent cars from just going out all the way out to the the end of the deck, and you'll see why in the next few few photos there. If you go to the next page, please. Thank you. Um, let's see, so this facility again is oriented similar to the cruise port. We've got some concrete beams that run east to west, which you can see all the way in the back there in that last picture. Um, and then on the left and the right, you have these concrete pier walls that run north to south. And these create galleries where all of the work is going to take place. The photos um, in the middle and that first photo there, all the way to the left, you can really see just how deteriorated the structure is. Um, you know, it it becomes pretty obvious why we have some jersey barriers out there just to prevent parking in certain areas. Um, but in the very last picture, you can see again, a deteriorated pier wall to the left. Um, you can see it's a little bit undermining the photo. I have some better photos on the next slide, but there's a space.
Danielle, just just to interrupt really quickly, I just want to be clear that we have assessed this for safety, and it's it is safe in its current use, it's just that we do need to do the maintenance as quickly as possible.
Yes.
Sorry, I just wanted to add that in.
It's okay, thank you for clarifying that, Chet. Um, yeah, we we did um, an inspection, we provided an inspection report. That's okay, thank you for clarifying that, Chet, um, yeah, we, we did um, an inspection, we provided an inspection report, did a full analysis, so. Yes, it is safe, um, just emphasizing, you know, obviously it, it needs to be repaired. Um, so in that very last picture, you can see the deteriorated pier wall on the left. Um, there's a space between the bottom of the pier wall and the ground, and that's just all deteriorated concrete. Um, if you look hard, you can see some piles there. Um, those piles, in some cases, are no longer really supporting that pier wall. But on the right-hand side, this is a good example of what that repaired pier wall is going to look like, that's actually the, the BPDA-owned property, that's. Just adjacent to this parcel, um, and we're essentially going to be doing the same thing, that's one of those repairs. Um, if you don't mind going to the next slide. Thank you, um, so here's just some more photos of those, the tierated pier walls to be repaired. Um, these are all located below the deck, the contractor can have access from the front of the site. Um, it's really just completely open to an existing revetment. Um, the contractor may elect to install some manholes to provide access to below deck. Um, and we did send those details to CONCOM ahead of that meeting, or this meeting. Um, aside from undermining, you can also see the face of these pier walls are deteriorated. Um, specifically in that first photo, all the way to the left with the four sixty-three written on it. Um, so the face of these pier walls, really just facing the water, are also being repaired, you can see it's kind of just, it looks like it's chipped away. Um, and along some of the portions of the deck above have broken off from the deterioration, you'll see this. Um, on the next slide, how we're going to repair that, and this is also just some good photos showing. The undermining and how the, the timber piles are no longer connected to those pier walls in some instances. You don't mind going to the next slide, please? Thank you, um, so this project doesn't have any impacts to land under ocean, excuse me, land under ocean. Um, it's limited to land subject to coastal storm flowage, it really just encompasses the, the whole site there. Um, and coastal bank located along the perimeter of the site. Um, in that first photo, it's, it's basically just a plan of the underdeck. You can see those pier walls running north and south, um, there are some beams that run east and west. Um, all these pier malls, pier walls are undermined, similar to the photos that you saw, so we're repairing all those. And essentially, what we're going to do is remove the dirt beneath those walls, just to expose those piles, and then just fill the whole area with concrete. Um, just looks like one big concrete block, and that's just to reconnect the piles to the pier wall. Um, you can see that in the detail on the right, it's that dark shaded area all the way at the bottom. Um, like I mentioned on the, the last slide, the face of those pier walls are also being repaired with concrete. Um, and they're essentially just being rebuilt, a kind of, um, it's that checkered pattern that you see there. Um, you can see the outline of the deteriorated pier wall, but it's again, essentially just being rebuilt in that same location. Um, this is the same case with the existing deck above, in areas where it's deteriorated and maybe fallen away, we're just rebuilding those deck areas. And then after all of these structural repairs are done, um, the site will be repaved. And then I believe this is the last slide, uh, the next one's just a thank you slide, so if you want, I could leave it on this slide. Uh, to answer any questions with those details open.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you. So Chet, I appreciate um, you volunteering that the um, uh, that, the conditions are not unsafe. But I don't think that Commissioner Sullivan and I are going to be having lunch together, sitting underneath one of those platforms anytime soon. Uh, didn't look all that safe to me, but um, that being said, manhole, uh, are you going to be putting that in? Or um, is that yet to be determined?
So it's, it's actually an option, uh, that we want to give the contractor if they want to use it for access. So we have not specifically designed it in, um, but we have an approved design, and uh, we may, we may install it or we may not.
Okay, uh, and then DMF um, uh, sent us a letter about working in the dry. I assume that you're going to be following the protocols of the DMF um, letter, you'd probably be doing that anyway?
Yeah, we, we actually follow those protocols right now with the work that we're doing in front of the cruise port, so we. It, it's actually almost impossible to do the work, you know, except in the dry, so.
Okay, thank you, um, Elena, do you have anything on this?
I just wanted to flag, which you had noted at the beginning of the hearing, but um, there isn't a DEP file number assigned to this quite yet, so we might just need to wait on that.
Yep, understood, Commissioner Sullivan?
All right, could you go to those site photos again, that, that page? Right there, so uh, the one on the left, where you see the four sixty-three, uh, right to the left of that, you see an outfall. Um, I believe that may be the uh, Water and Sewing Commission's outfall. Uh, my question is, how much debris is being moved that, you know, when that was put in, there was nothing blocking it at all? I can't tell from that photo whether or not, over this deterioration, you slowly, you know, debris worked its way down and was filling and obstructing that. And are there any other outfalls in this area that come from BPDA or Massport? That, uh, you know, come underneath the structure, or do you know of any?
I can answer that question, Chet, if, if you're good with that, um, I've been on site several times, I've inspected this. Probably four times now, we're doing recurring inspections, just to make sure that the condition doesn't worsen over time. Um, that outfall specifically, it, I have not seen anything that is impeding the flow through that outfall. Most of the deterioration you see, it stays beneath the deck, so if you actually maybe go back one slide, it might have.
Yeah, yeah, that area is actually elevated, I, I think it's hard to tell, uh, from that photo, uh, Commissioner Sullivan, but that. All that debris is elevated above the adjacent water.
Correct, and it hasn't moved, um, so if it falls, it falls in place, it's not being pushed out into the water.
Right, and are you removing all that debris?
Yes. Some, some of the debris, there's debris that's further in, um, that isn't being moved, but the debris that is part of the construction, um, is being removed.
Right, and are there any other outfalls there, that are BPDA or Massports?
None that I'm aware of.
Yeah, okay. And, and uh, Chair Parker, you bring me to lovely places to have lunch, I just want to put that on the record.
Yeah, well, I'd just like to talk about Scrivener's errors with you, so.
Yeah, okay, and, and it continues, so that's all I have.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Laney?
I had a question about, um, I understand that deck gets saw cut. Um, to, to straighten it out, I, I believe, and just curious sort of what the steps are to um. Hold that, I don't know, dust or debris or sediment from, um, from being left behind and then washed into the water?
Can you explain that one more time, I'm sorry?
I think just in that saw cutting, is that correct that the deck gets saw cut? The existing deck to.
It will get saw cut, yes.
Yeah, so I think I, I'm just sort of picturing that creating some, some amount of um, debris or, you know. Potentially dust or things that could get into the water, is there any concern about that or? Um, I know you do this kind of work a lot, so just sort of curious what that standard process is to address it?
We'll be able to physically remove any debris that gets generated from those types of activities, uh, prior to the next title cycle. So we're not, we're not significantly concerned about it getting entrenched in the water column and getting it swept out.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, and, and um, thank you for that question, uh, it's the one I usually ask. Um, but Chet, so um, despite it being called saw cut, saw cut, the debris are like larger. Pieces of debris that are easy to pick up, it's not.
That's correct, and typically, typically when um, when saw cutting takes place, there's usually a source of water. So it doesn't generate like, you know, clouds of dust like you would imagine.
Okay, thank you, um, Commissioner Condon?
Thank you, Chair Parker. What better place for lunch than a Boston Water Sewer Commission outfall, right? Looks pretty good to me. Is there like a foundation or some, some structure below these walls? I can't really tell if these walls are resting on something or just like hanging.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question, Commissioner, um, so the, what, what you're seeing is a, a pile-supported structure. Uh, it was filled a very long time ago, um, so there were timber piles that were driven down. Uh, and they're, they're probably friction piles, they weren't driven all the way down to bedrock. And then what you're seeing, for example, in that right-hand picture, uh, that, the what look like walls on either side are really just pile caps. So the piles are, are capped with those large uh, concrete slabs, well, slabs, more like walls. And then there are um, beams that run between the pile caps, and you can see one of them just uh, sort of. In the, in the, in the back of that photo, and then there's a slab, a concrete slab on top of it, that's being supported by both the beams. And the pile caps. You can't see the timber piles.
Sorry, go ahead, Chet.
No, you can't see the timber piles because they're underground in, in the photo to the right there. In some cases, they're exposed, uh, in the conditions that we're trying to repair, and in that case, we're going to re-encapsulate them. Um, essentially reconnect the concrete um, pile caps down to uh, the. Good section of um, of timber pile that's, that's located sort of below the ground.
Only where necessary or everywhere?
Uh, only where necessary, we're, we're targeting our repairs, I don't, I don't think we necessarily plan on doing it everywhere.
And I mean, there was a reference, I think maybe, um, Danielle, you referred to. Future flood conditions and how this project is not really about that, and I may not have heard that or understood that correctly. Is, isn't this an opportunity to take into consideration the rising seas and how this is going to only be more underwater more often? And potentially even see more than, like dynamic motion of water?
Well, Commissioner, it's, it's a very good question, um, obviously Massport is like, like every other. Uh, you know, property owner, uh, on, on the harbor is very concerned about climate change. Uh, and about the impact uh, to Massport's facilities. And while we recognize that there are vulnerabilities uh, to this particular tenant, uh, and while we do have a focus on that, uh, in the future. Uh, this particular project is not specifically tailored to address that, uh, because we're really just working on maintaining the structure. Uh, in its current condition, and its current condition, it's at a fixed elevation, the building's at a fixed elevation. Uh, so there's not much we can really do about that in the short term, but obviously, there are longer-term plans. Uh, that Massport is looking at, and we know the city is looking at as well, uh, and obviously, it's not a concern that we're taking lightly. Uh, it's just not the focus of this, this specific project.
I understand, what you are doing here, you are confident that work will work well with the rising seas as they come.
So, this project at its fixed elevation, uh, will be vulnerable to rising seas. Uh, it is something that we will have to deal with at one point or another, um, but uh, we can't, it, it wouldn't. Nothing we're doing as part of this project is going to really contribute to that effort. And other than reconstructing it, demolishing it and reconstructing it, which we don't really have the budget to do, and we don't want to do because we have an existing tenant there. Uh, there's not much we could really do to support um, the fight against climate change for this specific location. Um, but like, like you indicated, uh, it's obviously a concern to Massport, uh, and uh. You know, Massport is working uh, to, you know, put together plans to address that, much, much like the city is.
So the repair and reinforcement and all, all that, that's going to happen now, how long do you expect it to last? And hold together?
That's a good question, Danielle, what's the, what's the design life for these repairs?
I mean, as far as the design life goes, um, it's a minimum twenty-five years. I, I really don't expect that we're going to have undermining issues from a structural perspective too, you know, I. There's not a concern with like, you know, increased wave action, stuff like that affecting the structural capacity. I'm not concerned with the strength of the concrete and the impact from um, increased storm severity on this. These um, undermining repairs have been completed throughout the entire facility, even at the BPDA-owned properties, and they've held up very well. Um, we've inspected the entire cruise port and those older repairs that were done, you know, I. I think up to ten years ago, they've, they've held up very well and have not been undermined. Um, so you know, it's minimum twenty-five years, but I would say it's, it's likely much longer than that.
That's good to hear, thank you, that's all, Chair Parker.
Thank you, Commissioner Richmond?
Yeah, based on that answer, I just have a question, I think you told us, but I, I don't remember the answer. Uh, what was the last time that these, that this area was either repaired or constructed?
We don't think this area has ever been repaired, and we believe it was originally constructed in nineteen eighteen.
Nineteen eighteen, okay, I don't have any further questions, thank you very much.
Thank you, just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Or send your questions to staff via email at cc@boston.gov, um, Commissioner Herbst?
No questions, thanks.
Great, thank you, um, okay, Elena, uh, any raised hands? I don't see any.
No raised hands, no emails either.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to issue the order of conditions and close the hearing.
Oh, Chair Parker, did we want to wait on the DEP file number?
Oh geez, yeah, we can't do that, I'm sorry, um, we have to continue this, so I'd entertain a motion to continue the hearing until um, uh, DEP assigned. Uh, number is assigned.
So moved.
So moved, second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Um, Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
You, and I vote aye, that carries six nothing, okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I um, have a prior engagement, I'm gonna have to leave at seven thirty, and Commissioner Herbst has um. Graciously agreed to take over, but before I go, I thought maybe we would um, skip ahead to the minutes, because I reviewed the minutes. Um, we have three sets of minutes, um, and I'll take those off your plate. So um, having reviewed the, oh, now I forget, um, November sixth, November twentieth. And January eighth, twenty twenty-five, so number, November sixth and November twentieth for twenty twenty-four. And um, January eighth, twenty twenty-five, I reviewed those minutes, uh, made a few minor um, edits. So uh, unless anybody else has any questions, I would entertain a motion to accept. The meeting minutes from September sixth, twenty twenty-four, November twentieth, twenty twenty-four, and January eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Uh, you just meant November sixth, twenty twenty-four, uh, so, so moved.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
Okay, and I vote aye, so that carries six nothing, okay, I will um, just call this last one and then um. Get a vote on appointing a chair, so next item on the agenda is a request for a determination of applicability. From Tie and Bond, Inc., on behalf of the Boston Gas Company for the proposed replacement of existing gas mains. Located at two sixty-six to three seventy-six Commercial Street in the North End. Uh, as I said, uh, I'll be leaving now, uh, before we start this, I would entertain a motion to. Uh, appoint Commissioner Herbst, uh, acting chair for the rest of this um, hearing and then regular meeting.
So moved.
So moved, second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
And Commissioner Herbst? You're on mute?
Yeah, better get going, yes, I vote aye.
Warm up your voice, and I vote aye, that carries six nothing, okay, thank you, good evening, everyone.
Thank you, Chair Parker. Okay, uh, who is here uh, for the proponent for this item?
Good evening, my name is Isabel Arthen Long, I'm a project environmental scientist with Tie and Bond, representing Boston Gas Company. So this is, um, as the chair noted, a proposed gas main replacement project located. Uh, between twen- two sixty-six and three seventy-six Commercial Street in Boston. Next slide, please. So just, I'll give a, a brief overview of the project, um, the. Existing uh, gas mains are primarily constructed of cast iron, they're old, they're deteriorating and they're, they're prone to leaking. And you find these gas, these cast iron gas mains all over the state, um, and so there's an effort to. To replace them with uh, plastic piping that will improve the safety, reliability and longevity of these public gas utilities. So, this particular project, the scope includes replacement of approximately one thousand seven hundred and seventy feet of existing gas main. Within the Commercial Street right-of-way, all of the work is confined to the right-of-way, and as you can see on this uh, ortho photograph. A portion of the work will take place within jurisdictional resource areas. Including land subject to coastal storm flowage and the hundred-foot buffer zone to bank. You can go to the next slide. So this is a breakdown of impacts associated with the proposed work. Um, we're looking at six hundred forty-two linear feet, which translates to uh, almost one thousand three hundred. Uh, square feet, if you factor in the, the width of the trench, within land subject to coastal storm flow. the width of the trench within land subject to coastal storm flowage. And then five hundred linear feet or one thousand square feet of work within a buffer zone. And as you saw in the ortho photo, these areas do overlap. So it's it's just an approximately three hundred and uh, well, let's let's see, three seventy plus plus four fifty linear feet total of work within jurisdictional resource areas. Progress to the next slide. Thank you. So this is an an image of project plans. There there are additional site plans we can look through that get a little bit busier with all of the callouts if the commission wants to go further into depth. But this is an overview of those existing gas mains, which are shown in a sort of red squiggly line. And then the proposed new gla- gas mains in pink. The hundred foot buffer zone to coastal bank is shown in green and called out there and land subject to coastal storm flowage is shown in blue. So this this is reflecting the entirety of the project scope. I will mention that this work would be would qualify under the the utility exemption under the Wetlands Protection Act, except that the Boston Commission has previously determined that the the two inch diameter increase or two inch increase in pipe diameter constitutes a substantial enlargement. So that's that's why this is being brought to the commission tonight as an R D A. Okay, next slide, please. Thank you. So this this slide shows some existing conditions on Commercial Street. All of the work again will take place within this existing paved public right of way. And I believe that is my last slide. I'm happy to answer any any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Elena, what do you have for us on this one?
Well, yeah, just a quick question on timeline. We were just wondering when work is expected to begin and how long it might take.
That's a great question. I believe that this is slated for this this upcoming construction season in the spring and summer. I would have to confirm with with Boston Gas Company to give you a a precise estimate on on the duration of work, but my experience with similar scoped projects is that it would probably be a couple of months. But that that is an estimate.
Um, Chair Herbst, maybe we could just make sure that any conditions attached to determination just include a forty eight hour forty eight hour notice to commission staff, just so we know when the work is going to begin.
Okay. Thank you. Any anything further, Elena?
No, that was it. Thank you.
Okay, so before I go to commissioners for comment, as a reminder to members of the public to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at C C at Boston dot gov. Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, is it gonna be, Elena, it's gonna be conditions to put some kind of devices on the catch spaces along here. So as they're doing their work, any runoff or any other problems? Don't get into the catch spaces.
So, yeah, if the if the commission chooses to issue a negative determination, we recommend including standard erosion and sediment control conditions with that as well.
Right. And and could I ask you, I just see there's like two lines running down a street as if there's no other utilities in this utility strewn Commercial Street. The gas company, have you have you looked at all the other utilities and make sure that you're not going to be wavering from this plan that you've given us? Then all of a sudden, you find there's other underground, you know, electric lines, telephone lines, communication lines, water sewer. Are we certain that the straight lines as we are being told is where this gas is gonna go, correct?
Sure, yes. If if you go back to the site plans, I think two slides back, they're not they're not perfectly straight lines. You'll see there are, you know, some some areas where they're they're bumped out to accommodate other other existing utilities. And there will also be coordination as required with with the D P W to open up the the road. So not not expecting any surprises. It, of course, if there was a major deviation from what was presented to you tonight, we would be required to come back to the commission.
Yeah, no, I mean, when I just look at that, it I don't see electric on there. I don't see telephone. I don't see sewer. I don't see water. So it seems kind of wild that we would assume this works. That's all. It's very, very confusing.
Right, Dee Dee, if you if you progress past the discussion slide, I have a couple of more, you know, more intricate plans here that that just are are a little busy. They were presented and, you know, with the R D A application, but they show a greater level of detail. And also, I'll call out if you go progress two slides, we did submit an erosion control plan. And and work will will all be up to, you know, perform in accordance with the with the national grid B M Ps for erosion and sediment controls.
All right. Yeah, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Linay?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Conan?
Thank you, Chair Herbst. So those detailed maps, they do show the utilities, do they?
Let's let me pull them up on my on my bigger screen to try and direct you here. There are yes, there are there are callouts on there for existing existing utilities. There's there's sewer lines, water lines, underground electric lines. All all of those those different gray dashed lines are are existing utilities that that will remain.
Let's see. That's helpful. So the the diameter that you spoke about diameter increase, is that the inner diameter, outer diameter? What what is it?
It there will be an increase in in both interior and exterior diameter.
Does that mean there is an increase in the capacity?
Slightly, slightly, yes.
So this isn't simply a replacement because the material is deteriorating, it's an increase in the capacity?
Which is why this is is not at least under under Boston Conservation Standards considered a replacement that is exempt under that utility exemption. So so that's the reason that that we're proceeding with an R D A here instead of a maintenance notification.
I understand why you're doing the R D A. I'm trying to understand the scope of the work. It's it it's a replacement for sure because the current material is deteriorating, but it is also an increase in the capacity of what gas the amount of gas that can pass through this pipeline.
Yes, if you if you go back to the impact slide, it will show there we go. So we will be, oh, that actually doesn't doesn't say what the existing diameter is. Let me pull that up. Plans. So some some portions of the work will be a direct replacement, six inch cast iron for six inch plastic. A portion of the work will be will be an increase from six inch to eight inch. And a portion will be a increase from eight inch to ten inch. So there, you know, there are several different different sections of of gas mains, honestly, of of a few different materials and and the my, you know, my my expertise is in is in wetlands, not in not in gas gas mains. So I I can't speak to the to the reasoning behind all of the the different line sizes, but but yes, it is a replacement, as you as you mentioned, replacing existing mains, but it also does does represent a increase in pipe size di- in pipe diameter.
Thank you. I just, you know, we're we're part of our concern here is climate change, and we talk about what causes it, and gas is a fossil fuel. And as we have these opportunities to replace, the hope would be to try and get alternate fuels for people who need fuel and reduce the amount of gas. But it seems like the attempt here is to increase the amount of gas thereby sort of keeping people in the habit and dependence on fossil fuel. That's sort of where my concern is coming from, but I know that you're trying to get an R D A here for a different reason. So I do want to make that observation and have that on the record. But thank you for, but but everything you said does mean to me that there is net increase in capacity, even though it's only sections that are that are increasing in diameter. But thank you. That's all to your herbs.
Commissioner Rich Richmond?
I'm sorry, I was muted and I couldn't get unmuted. I have a question, Elena. If we vote that this does not require an N O I, would there be any conditions attached to the construction of this line?
Yes, so typically, when the commission gets a negative determination, almost always it comes with the standard erosion and sediment control conditions. And for this one, we had just also recommended that we'd include a condition asking the applicant to give us give the commission staff forty eight hours notice before construction begins.
Okay, I heard you say that, and that would be possible. And is there anything else? I mean, I I guess where I'm coming from on this is that it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to come back on an N O I if what we would want can be accomplished by these conditions. Is there anything else besides that that you think should be added to what we already have?
I think, given the location of the work, the fact that it's, you know, an existing roadway, I think that with erosion and sediment controls, that that's really our our main concern. And that would be that would be.
Okay, I have no further questions. Thank you, Chair Herbst.
Thank you. And yes, I think it's been our experience that we for these kinds of projects, very typically issue an R D A with erosion control. And in this case, forty eight hour notice of startup. So if if somebody would like to make a motion for that type of negative determination, that would be appropriate.
So moved.
Is there a second? Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Linay?
Aye.
Commissioner Conan?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that passes five to nothing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda is a request for an amendment to the original order of conditions for D E P file number zero zero six twenty seventeen and Boston file twenty twenty four zero thirty seven from Conoco Engineers and Scientists, Inc. on behalf of the Department of Conservation and Recreation for updated language and the special conditions for the reconstruction of the existing Napaunza River Reservation, Napaunza Landing Two Spray Deck and Spray Deck Equipment, replacement of walkways and repair and replacement of utilities at seventy two Hilltop Street, Dorchester, Mass. Who's here for the proponent?
Yeah, hi, everyone. This is Kevin McKee with Conoco Engineers and Scientists, and I am here on behalf of the applicant, the Department of Conservation and Recreation.
Okay, go right ahead.
Good, thank you. Yeah, so, yeah, as you mentioned here, this, the an order of conditions was issued for this project, I think about a month ago. And there are some special conditions that were included with the order of conditions. D C R went through those, I guess, after the order conditions was actually issued, unfortunately, and had three conditions at the end of the order, three special conditions that they are requesting be removed. And these conditions don't really have any impact on the actual construction itself. Nothing that's proposed for the project would change. But these conditions really address the inclusion of a conservation restriction on the property after the project is completed. The conservation restriction, as as written in there, in the 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 three special conditions, they address adding a conservation restriction that would be, you know, reviewed and approved by the City of Boston and also the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. The reason that D C R is asking that these conditions be eliminated, there are, there's really two primary reasons, but one being that the, again, the conservation restriction would go through the E E A and D C R actually falls under the E E A. So since this property is already, it's, you know, state park, it's under the jurisdiction of the E E the E the E E A and D C R itself. And they have restrictions in place of what can be done in these state parks. There already are conservation restrictions in place. So it's somewhat redundant to be adding in additional restrictions, which is the that's the thought of D C R. And the other primary reason for excluding these conditions is that this site is the location of a former junkyard. And it went through the full Massachusetts contingency plan process, went through a full cleanup and remediation. And because of, you know, what is left behind, there is an activity use limitation that is already exist on the property, which further restricts any building or anything that could be done out at the site. So there is really a secondary type of restriction that's on the property. So again, where this is a state property and it's a state park where no building is planned to be done, there are restrictions already in place, both through D C R and the E E A already. And due to the A U L, D C R is asking that these, the steps that are required for this conservation restriction be removed from the order conditions.
Okay, thank you. Elena, what do you have on this?
Uh, nothing to add to that.
Okay, is it? I I guess I'll have a question for you. And I I think, is it fair to say that this probably was an error to have these included?
Yes, yeah, they they weren't flagged before the first order of conditions was issued. So we're in full support of removing them.
Okay, so before I go to the commissions, I'll say, as a reminder to members of the public to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at C C at Boston dot gov. Commissioner Sullivan?
Uh, no questions.
Okay, Commissioner Linay?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Commissioner Conan?
Questions?
Commissioner Richmond?
No questions.
And I have no questions either. Did we have anybody who wanted to speak, Elena?
I did not receive anything in the inbox, and I'm not seeing any raised hands either.
Okay, so at this point, I'm trying to think, what am I looking for here? A a motion to approve the amendment and close the hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Linay?
Aye.
Commissioner Conan? Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that passes five, nothing. So, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
All right. So we have one continuance. Continuing is a notice of intent for D E P file number zero zero six nineteen ninety six and Boston file number twenty twenty four oh twenty one for Epsilon Associates on behalf of the Boston Water and Sewer Commission for the proposed construction of the North Austin Storm Drain Extension Project to improve the Boston Water and Sewer Commission's Stormwater Management System at five hundred Soldiers Field Road in Austin. So the commission will now begin its regular meeting, and the first item on the agenda is a request for a certificate of compliance for D E P file number zero zero six nineteen oh eight from V H B on behalf of the Massachusetts Port Authority for the proposed rehabilitation of runway fifteen R thirty three L and repaving of connecting intersections located at Logan International Airport, East Boston. Elena, what do you have on this?
Yeah, so staff conducted a site visit, and based on what we saw as well as the Yeah, so staff conducted a site visit, um, and based on what we saw as well as the materials which were filed. Uh, we believe that everything was done in accordance to the permit, so we would recommend issuing a certificate of compliance with the perpetual maintenance conditions, numbers fifty five, sixty, seventy seven, sixty nine, and eighty.
Okay, uh, any questions or concerns from commissioners?
You went on the runway, Elena?
Uh, we did, yes. So we got to, we drove the full length, we didn't walk the full length, but um, drove the full length, got to see it. Um, learned some interesting things about how airports work.
Cool.
Interesting job perks, huh?
Truly, truly, yes. Um, if you want to live vicariously, there are some uh, photos taken, as you can probably tell, from a mostly moving vehicle in the drive folder.
Okay. Uh, if there's nothing further, I would entertain a motion to approve the certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero zero six nineteen oh eight. Uh, with the recommended continuing conditions.
So moved.
Is there is, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Linay?
Aye.
Commissioner Conan?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that passes five to nothing.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so our next item is a request for a certificate of compliance for DEP. DEP file number zero zero six nineteen eighty seven and Boston file number twenty twenty four uh, zero twelve. From Environmental Health and Engineering, Inc. on behalf of Hebrew Rehabilitation Center for the proposed, proposed resurfacing and driveway. Resurfacing of driveway and loading dock and associated stormwater improvements located at twelve hundred Center Street in Roselandale. Uh, Elena, what do you have for this?
Yes, and Chair Herbst, apologies, um, we, so there were originally four certificates of compliance on the uh, agenda for the meeting. The two projects related to uh, the Hebrew Rehabilitation Center. Um, we uh, found out that there weren't fish plates installed for portions of the work, so. Um, we figured that it would be easier to just move both of those, um, both of those COCs to whichever. Meeting comes closest to when the fish plates are installed, so um, the only other COC that we uh, would be considering is the one for fifty seven Dedham.
Uh, and my apologies, because now I see that's on my agenda, I just didn't see it in time.
No worries.
Okay, so we'll try the.
I wanna, um, do they also provide you when they do the COC an Asbeld drawing, so you see where those stormwater improvement devices were put in?
Yes, yep, so they, they also provide us with an Asbeld, which um, we've, we've received all of their filing materials, but when we did the site visit, we just noticed that the fish plates weren't installed.
Right, so we, we can get a copy of those. Uh, Asbeld, so we just want them for our records, because they get a thirty percent discount.
Yeah, absolutely.
Wonderful stormwater fee, and we'll be in fear to everybody this week, so get a hold of them, we can take care of it.
Perfect, I'll send those your way.
Thank you.
Okay, and now for the, the correct uh, certificate of clients request, so it's for DEP file number zero zero six. Is this the right one? Yes, it is, uh, seventeen sixteen and Boston file number twenty twenty zero zero four. From Comprehensive Environmental, Inc. on behalf of the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation. For soil remediation located at fifty seven Dedham Street Hyde Park. Uh, so what do you have for us on this one, Elena?
Yes, uh, similarly, we conducted a site visit on March thirteenth and there are photos in the drive folder for the commission's review. Uh, based on their filing materials and what we saw on site, we believe that everything was done in accordance with their permit. Uh, they had received an order of conditions and later received an amended order of conditions. Um, and we would recommend issuing a certificate of compliance with perpetual maintenance conditions, numbers twenty six, forty three, forty eight, and sixteen.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from anybody on the commission or, or the applicant?
How much water did you see on the site?
Pardon?
Uh, did you see any water?
We, we saw a bit of water, there's um, a little bit of water, when, so when you're coming off of Dedham Street and sort of walking, you know. Onto what kind of looks like a driveway towards um, what we think might be a storage area. Um, there's a little bit of water to, to the left of that driveway. So the, the resource area delineations on the site are pretty interesting.
Hmm, does it look like, like a temporary puddle or looks more permanent?
No, I think, let me, sorry, let me check the um. Resource areas, so um, we uh. We had identified uh, there as being, um, and now I'm forgetting whether it was. A stream or a brook, but a moving body of water as well as BBW, so the um. In total, we were looking at uh, bordering land subject to flooding, the twenty five foot waterfront area, twenty five foot riverfront area, a hundred foot buffer to inland bank, and then a hundred foot buffer to BBW.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay. Uh, I think now it would be appropriate to accept uh, or to make a motion to approve a certificate of appliance. Um, for a DEP file. Number zero zero six seventeen sixteen and twenty twenty oh oh four with the recommended continuing conditions.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Linay?
Aye.
Commissioner Conan?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that passes unanimously. Uh, okay, the next item on our agenda is administrative updates.
Thank you, yes, so we had two administrative updates, the first was for an administrative approval, uh, which we processed for work within land subject to coastal storm flowage. It's located at nine forty four Bennington Street in East Boston and involves a Burger King that is getting um, a bit of a remodel. So uh, there was not going to be any increase in uh, pervious area, or excuse me, an impervious area. And um, based on, based on the meetings that we had uh, with the project team and with the plans that they had submitted, we thought an administrative approval was appropriate. Uh, the request and the administrative approval are both in the drive folder for the commission's review. And if anybody has questions now, or if any questions come up later, I'm happy to answer those.
Any questions now from commissioners?
Nope.
Okay, we'll take that as an update, and you have a second item, Elena?
I do, yes, uh, the second and final update and administrative updates is uh, that we also. Received notice from the Boston Harbor Shipyard and Marina in East Boston. That um, a portion of the sheet pile near, um, along a graving dock nearest to where the pilot boats are kept. Um, had failed and uh, the sheet pile had kind of collapsed into, into the water and uh, there's a decent amount of soil behind that. So um, they requested an emergency certification, which after conducting a site visit and after getting the necessary uh, documentation. Uh, including uh, Massport declaring this a uh, public health uh, slash safety emergency because of the um, potential impacts to the pilot boats nearby. Uh, we issued an emergency certification which will expire. Uh, I believe it is on April twelfth, but I just want to confirm that. Uh, uh, it'll expire on April twelfth and specifically permits uh, the shipyard to uh, excavate the soil that had collapsed in. Uh, uh, fix the, the, the sheet pile wall and then also install five to six pilings to keep everything in place.
Okay, I did see the picture in the file, it looks kind of dramatic.
It is, yes.
Uh, are there questions from any of the commissioners on this?
It, it all makes sense, given the, the dramatic picture and the emergency nature of things. I just wonder how often these things are starting to happen and if we kind of like track this, we can maybe discern what the pattern is.
Yes, uh, uh, one of the questions that did come up during the conversation was whether this could be covered. Uh, by the existing order of conditions that is the sort of repairs and maintenance uh, order of conditions which was issued to the shipyard. However, um, a, a collapsed wall was not included in that, I think the, the closest thing that we had. Um, was a sinkhole, but because the sinkhole doesn't involve uh, driving any new piles. We uh, we thought that an emergency certification was more appropriate and they also noted that they think that they're going to have to do uh, additional work to sort of fix the area around this. And so we're expecting uh, uh, an NOI filing um, in the coming months from them for the rest of the work that has to happen around this, but, but yes, um. I agree, I think that uh, a lot of the sort of ongoing issues in the shipyard were. Mostly included in their repairs and maintenance uh, permit that they received, but uh, this, this wasn't.
Okay, uh, does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Well, it's sort of, I, um, mine is even sort of a larger one, not specific to this project and how often. The collapsing and the bailing is happening um, along the waterfront. And um, I wonder if it's like, it's, it's something that we start to pay attention to. When you look at one thing at a time, we do whatever is right in that context. But if it's happening more and more, then maybe their response should be something more systemic.
Absolutely, yeah, I um, I will say, I, I think that as far as emergency certs go. Um, we haven't seen a whole lot of them, I, I, I mean, I recognize that I think two, two of the ones, at least during my tenure, staff uh, have been at the shipyard specifically. Um, so I think that they're dealing with kind of a unique site, um, both in its history and also in its, in its use. Um, but yeah, I, I, I agree, I think that, you know, if we do start seeing more of these types of things crop up, we, we definitely want to pay attention to that pattern.
Yeah.
Okay. I probably should know this, but I'm actually not certain, do you need us to ratify this, Elena?
Uh, yes, please, yeah.
Okay.
I apologize, I should have, I should have asked for that, but.
Okay, that's right, um, so. Uh, let's see, I guess we're looking for a motion to ratify the emergency certification granted to, give me their official name, Elena?
Yes, the Boston Harbor Shipyard and Marina.
Okay, uh, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, on, on what date?
Absolutely, uh, so it was issued to them on, I want to say, the, on March thirteenth and it'll expire on April twelfth.
Okay, so I'd be happy to entertain a motion to, to ratify that, given emergency certification.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Linay?
Aye.
Commissioner Conan?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
And since we already did the minutes, we're actually done, uh, so as Chair Parker would say, we can finish by acclamation.
Yay.
Less than anybody wants to stick around, let me know, but you'll be on your own.
Have a good night.
All right, good night all.
Thank you all.
Good night, thank you.